I think that's appropriate. There have been a number of spottings of fly tipping around the town. It's not all trade waste, some of it has been residential waste. But the teams that have been able to react appropriately to remove that waste have been very quick. So I think perhaps in tandem with the question you would like me to ask, we can ask further questions about increases of fly tipping.
I mean, I think there's a difference between having a booking system in urban collaboration.
Yeah.
Where it's much busier than the place I was to wherever the years I used it, and there's never much of a queue.
Yeah, that's very good. Yeah, I will, I'll pose that question for you.
It's down to the postcode as well, so it's being introduced, isn't it? So it's also you can back the postcode. So there's no cross-bordering at all, other people bring in from out county that can use the SWRCs for that. So as your, as the payer of that through our council tax, they are Norfolk-owned sites.
Yeah.
Norfolk people. We, when you move towards close the border, Suffolk have come into Norfolk, shall we say, residents, and they're double hammered prior to this system being put in place. So you can track people and reduce the amount of people who are bringing in stuff as well. I think for the fly tipping, as we've asked, it'll be part of the process that does some work around SWRCs. So it hasn't been a much of a problem on the booking side of systems and the RT platform. It takes 147 seconds to book a slot when you go through.
So I appreciate that, but as we've seen with the, with Lloyd's closing, for example, the slight switching up. We have a demographic who don't have access to the internet. Who find the telephonic system is quite complicated, someone's jumped through many, many menus. It takes longer to get through on phone than it does the other way. So whilst it works for many people, it doesn't work for everybody. And that's what we're seeing is the issue, I think.
I think what we need is, the web, the web side, if you look through a computer, like paid up, or paid up, or paid, you find these apps do anything. What we need is a simple phone app, so it knows where you are, it knows your phone. Just find your slot and put your registration in, job done, rather than a cycle through lots and lots of pages.
I think an app for all public services would be really helpful. Because what we don't really want is residents to have different apps for different things. So perhaps if we eventually get to e-commerce, that might be something that's forthcoming.
Jerry, Jerry, Lucy, did you hear two or three people, there's rumors going about they're gonna close access to it on Wednesdays.
I've heard that.
Yes, it's closer on Wednesdays.
Yeah. So I think the large concern that I've got is if it's slightly more difficult for people to get to, then less people will use it. So if the booking system is preventing some people and less people attend, we're looking at correlation without causation really. In my biggest fear is if the attendance looks low, there's a money saving exercise, they would want to close it.
That's right.
That said, I'm not promoting that everybody wants to use it if they don't need to use it. But we need to make sure that everybody is able to access it. And I think from what I'm hearing, we just need to make sure that everybody can. So I don't know whether or not it's a conversation with our libraries, for example, who could perhaps support people to do booking. And I'm sure our library teams do, but I don't think everybody would be aware of that. And our libraries aren't open all the time. So perhaps it's an information exercise on actually just speaking to the public about how they're feeling about it and whether or not they're not attending as much. I know it's working for a large number of people, but if we're seeing a reduction, we need to understand why that reduction's happening. Maybe we're all better at recycling, maybe we're getting better at consuming less or keeping hold of more. I don't know the answer to that, but I think you could start with the question, as posed by Eric, really, and a little bit more information.
Terry's point there was about it closing on Wednesdays.
Yeah.
Which is the case, isn't it?
I believe so, but we have seen many twists and turns in things that have come forward. But I'm happy to ask some questions and get back to you with a broader response that we've got for some important questions that were asked today. Thank you.
Right, we're all ready for you here from the police, and the report from, from Emma. In the last month, they had 91 investigations in North Balsam, it's been a great split between the three parts of town. East, north and west. That compares to 74 in previous months, so there's an increase. But she said that's quite normal, that's the way to get warmer and it's a better weather for a person's behaviour. They've had 402 calls for service, which is higher than normal. They had a priority meeting on 28th April on the next one is on 5th June, which is on Teams rather than a physical meeting. So if anyone's interested in joining that, then we can give you the details. That's all from the place. And so moving on to general public, anyone like to add anything to the meeting? Robert, if you wanted to.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for inviting us, probably even though no one probably would have come. So from the new councillors, if you don't know, I'm Robert, I'm the owner of the children's day, from the writers Tyler and I by Shem. So we created, I created it over seven years ago. Since then, we're now taking £14,281 for local charities, which obviously this year which doesn't go away £3,490. So yeah, that's where we are. We're past Tyler, who moves to cover the main day of what happened this year and what's going forward.
Yes, so we're proud to come back again. As you can see, we've sort of grown and grown. Or some say maybe too big for where we are, but we feel the town really works for us. It keeps the businesses happy, it benefits all the trades in the town as well. And we feel we attract quite a lot of people from outside of the town to come to the fortune. Obviously this year, the most, the hardest thing we're trying to happen to the car parks, because we have had the car parks for free for the last couple of years. And that didn't really benefit us, but we did get many complaints about that. Going forward, yeah, we are now starting operations, looking at new things to bring back. Keeping the same charities this year, but we're gonna support church again, who support ourselves. And the cadets, who are obviously, they're cadets in the town as well, so we're looking at keeping them two charities. We are looking at new attractions, obviously new attractions do come with a lot of price tags. But we try still trying to keep everything as cheap and free as possible to encourage any people to come out and spend what they have got. Or actually, they don't have anything, come and enjoy a nice day. Yeah, that's where we are now.
No, I can't think of it. Any questions for you guys?
Maybe you won't know. Thank you for what you're doing, and I look forward to the issues.
I look forward to having more fun each year again. We are trying to change it, matey, but we are a dump tank instead, so. Once you sit on and get sponsored up.
And you have the members of public going to do that, please? Thank you. So my intention is to point them to our various committees. But the first of those is developing meditatives, which.
Before we proceed to that, yes, um.
Please, I was on doing last year, all personnel, some of our foundations that are advised would be down to by all council. We don't need a personnel committee.
I was going to mention that, I'm going to drop that line.
Thank you, David.
Well, either we have a personnel committee and just have it out of, if it's a bunch of people, or we abolish it. So those are the two options. If we choose to abolish it, it'll be discussed at a future meeting. As we raise that, as we raise that, we may as well discuss that.
We have proposed that we follow the development and given all personnel matters into full council, that we abolish personnel committee.
We've made it further discussion until formally adjourned. We can put it on the agenda the next time, but it seems a sensible way to go unless anybody has any strong views otherwise. But we'll discuss that next time. So we've got the developments and amenities group, and the committee, and the finance and grants committee. So development is looking after projects and maintenance of the town, and finance and grants is what it says. So there are seven places on the development and amenities committee. We're all allowed to be on up to two committees. So the options are open, so is there any particular, who would like to be on the developments committee?
A lot, still.
Yeah. I'd like to join that.
I'll have to join. I'd quite like to stay in that. So I've got Eric, Roger, Julia, Terry, Helen and Bob. Anybody else?
Not to share this time.
Do we need to, are we proposing something, do we need to? Come on.
Anyway, that's pleased.
I'd like to propose. Okay.
All in favour of that group? Thank you. And the finance and grants committee is five people, currently chaired by Eric.
Chairmanship's decided in the committee.
Yes, I was saying, currently. So who is interested in managing the entire committee?
So just quickly, anyone who is going to come onto the finance committee will need to have some finance related training. So if you haven't got something ready, you won't be put in for training, so just so you know, that's fine.
Obviously, that committee is in charge of spending a lot of sums of money. So Eric can comment?
That tiny meeting means basically we've done finance, but I've got a pretty big budget to handle, so I can afford it.
Thank you.
We've got four. Okay, so we've got Paul, Anne Reid, Eric, Robert, Roger and Bob.
For that group?
Second group.
Thank you. On the favour?
When we're all in favour, can we put our hands right up so I can see?
It's not only Jane at this time, and next time, we need to appoint some members to external groups. The Vison Lane partnership for the local railway, Paul's charity with the church, and another one as well, I think.
I've got the medicine, it's on email.
Just some advice, and I'm still on a bit of a mind, throughout partnership. You're on the district, I'm on the district, excuse me. They're too fast. Also, the director on board comes around, or district chairman. First we're led to review the meeting's events for coming year. Obviously, this can be amended if needed, but following the usual pattern, I assume, we'll see if that's not considered come off that.
There's only one group to.
So is there any of it? Is removing the personal committee, I propose we accept that.
The finance meeting meeting is down for June the 10th, when I opened last discussion. But I had it done on June the 17th.
We will need to confirm that one, because I don't know.
I think I'll leave that to you first, because I'll leave you with it.
That's fine, leave that with me then.
I'll struggle to make June 10th.
So I would say I'll leave it to you as well. The first amendment, I propose we accept that. Items, some of that second up. We've got a whole series of policies and terms of reference we have to renew each year. If there are any changes, we can renew those, although they pass through. The first item is in terms of reference, for mayors and deputy mayors. Any comment about how mayors, it mentions one of its, one of the mayors' duties is to punish rights for payments. I think he wasted it a lot, but I believe that he does. So it is to, I would say it is to act against payments that are, which doesn't matter.
Okay. So with those amendments now.
The first amendment, so I propose we accept that. Accepted, all in favour? Thank you. Now we have a whole range of policies here. Does anyone have any comments on those, I've got a few, but anyone else has got any? Put the mask over there, I think it's a bit amended to.
So from what I saw, Wendy has done these, but the notes I've been passed is that she's amended the planning procedure in line with what we're now doing, bringing it to the council. Astounding orders, financial controls and procurement have been amended in line with the new financial regs. Code of conduct complaints has been amended up at the note guidelines. I believe in the standing orders, the references to lead officer and deputy clerk have been removed. Other than that, I don't think there's any other significant changes for anything.
Can I just ask that in the financial regulations, I will ask for this to be agenda changing of finance. Because you're alerting me to one of the things that the model acts are working. Is going to point you out of approved suppliers, because even for a contract of £5, you almost obliged to go through quotes. So I think we need to look at those again to see whether it will be a level which you can use approved suppliers without through quotes.
The delegation scheme, 13.3, has need to be amended to reflect the personal credentials that my ex key's on there, and I can see you're talking to someone. So needs to be refreshed. And in the planning procedure, that needs to be amended to reflect the, what we were just saying about the applications being discussed here.
Apart from that then? So we'll bring back 13.2 financial regs that I'll go to finance committee. 13.3, the delegation scheme, and 13.9 we'll bring those back again. All the rest, we're not happy with.
You proposing that, Eric?
Yes, I propose.
All in favour of those? Thank you. We've got five GDPR policies, which I don't have any comments on. Very standard, so I don't think anything has changed there.
Not one, I've read where I was.
Same second, two quarters. And where's the way of those? Employment policies. All of those, those are now, need to be changed, or changed on. Is that the, there's five for true.
So these are the top ones, 15 through to 19, were supposed to be reviewed by the personnel committee. But obviously, if we're not having a personnel committee, that means it's reviewed by the council. And then the rest, point 20 onwards, all that mean new havoc.
So those five are used.
So still need to show here.
So you don't need to review anything yet.
Not yet.
The finance policies, that'll be on the agenda for finance, finance committee.
Yeah.
And the many policies to do with development and maintenance systems, they'll be on the next meeting. And information and security policies. I think it will be the next meeting as well.
Yeah, I don't think they've finished.
Right, it's that part, thank you, I agree with this. Next item is supporting finance, we need to improve the expenditure since the annual meeting. I mean, what the list of expenditures in your pack? If you have any previous, I'm sure Jasmine's been asked that.
Not a finance person.
There's going to be nothing there, so. Yeah, okay, I'll second that as well. All in favour of accepting those? In the pack, you've got the bank reconciliation, probably into the financial year, which is pure information. The balances, which is fine. And the, is the external portion coming next week around here?
I think we're preparing first with the team, and she's coming for it in, so it will, it's all kicking off in the finance team at the moment.
There's also somewhere receipts and payments in there, your information, which just gives you a bit of money in there. 14.4 is a list of regular payments, standing orders if you like, that we have for leases and agreements. We have to agree those, and then we get to agree those payments anyway. Of those that we do accept those, they're all great ones for many years anyway. Second, all in favour? Thank you. And then we come to the approved supplier list, which Eric touched on earlier. In under the previous situation, the finance regulations for routines, small scale works. We have improved supplier list that we could just go to law and home to see multiple tenders. And that list is the list of people that we use. So we improve, hopefully we can improve this, and the next finance meeting, finance will come up with a new policy on how we apply that list. So I propose we accept that list. All in favour of that? Thank you. On the, we've got a list of fees for various things for variables and so on. In a kind of Japanese, I thought we were going to put something in there about non-standard variables being subject to quotation or something. I'm sure we did change it in the paper.
I was not a part of changing these, so, yes.
Perhaps you could check on that, because I think that came out, that came out because we had a period last year that was very large and complicated. And required huge expense by us to create the space needed, to prepare and charge the standard, the standard. So it's a very rare occurrence, but just to ensure we don't lose expenditure. Item 15 is because, oh. We can read ones on there, and we can factor that one on, which we do.
I think if we're doing it next, can we have some advice about when we should be reviewing fees, whether there should be re-increase? Normally in my experience, it's done around budget setting time.
Yes.
For reasons we haven't increased for some time, we don't, we can't, without, it's not something you can continue to do.
That's fine. In the lines of work that I deal with, we are well charging under what other towns are charging, and we haven't increased fees in a long time. So it's definitely something that has to happen.
So something maybe for that to finance, which is wrong.
Yeah, we can have a discussion, and it might be something that when it comes to budget setting, that's.
Yeah, I think that's right. Item 15, cross funds.
No, and there's no cross decisions that might have, so.
So item 16 is to agree the recommendations from the events and tourism working group, which you've got to the top. Probably the main thing is to approve this plan for EJ day in August.
So basically, the E day went really nicely, it was very respectful, and we had a large turnout, particularly at the park in the evening. We like to use the same format as that, but we're going to add some extra things in, because we know that a lot of people from Balsam were affected by the EJ day and also the E day. So the extra things we're looking to do is work with the heritage information centre, and have an exhibition on photos and memorabilia. We're hoping to have that in town, and then move that to the park for the evening. We're hoping to get some children involved, do some maps and things to display. And then we're also hoping to get some entertainment for the park, so the peaking light and, sorry, the beacons lighting. Will be quite late in the evening as set by the national guidelines, so we'd like to have perhaps some food and some entertainment for people who are looking to stay for the evening. We didn't have, we didn't have a particular budget for that. I think most groups are willing to do it out of the goodness of their heart, so it would only be very minimal. And I'm sure that we can squeeze it out of our own budget a bit, but yeah.
Need any questions on that? So, well, the proposal that we get the events and tourism commission to develop that for August, which we're all aware of. Someone would like to second that? All in favour? Thank you very much. Item 17 is to discuss family applications, I think we have the one in this one. Small on the Croydon Road, if you care. Can you comment myself on that one? Any videos? Okay, so the post that we need to support that application. Item 17, all in favour? We should extension. There's probably mentioned we might want to make a further comment on the tree protection, we are hoping on highways, making their comments. Access to the site is the main issue. I'm not understanding that really well.
It's worth keeping an eye on the driving airport, to see where the various reports are heading to. It's worth keeping an eye on the, uh, driving airport, just to see whether, where the various reports are getting to. And that's, I think, uh, although we're on this actually prepared, this is the other. The product next, projecting on this.
Want to check the date?
Yeah.
Um, item eighteen is items for the next agenda, obviously, we prefer various items to that, but, um, um, in particular, for, for new councils, um, you know, be, be good to have, you know, some new ideas and thoughts about projects and things we might develop in the town. It's one of the bonuses, having lots of new people, you've got some new ideas, so if you can, uh, put some thoughts together on that, and then trust in how that we can put on the agenda.
I think we, so we can discuss a couple of things, one is to get back to sort of the level of the players.
Yes.
There you go, that would likely pass that, I'd be conflicted with my role as, you know, chair of the district. The other one, as I suggested in the previous meeting, was we do need to look at some sort of development plan for ourselves as community leaders in town, and where we want to move to town forward, particularly to protect ourselves from what could happen, uh, with the, the, the government review. Uh, there are concerns that typically lumbered in this, uh, certain coastal borough, which has a very low cattle tax, like in this middle town, that's, you know, that, in case you're social forcing. You know, not only will I affect on our cattle tax, yeah. So when you're more interested in developing, we are here, when you're in that, on town, you might have a whole bit of that for it. So we do, we do need to be prepared, I think, for other aspects within the town, we ought to be trying to take, we should negotiate in the district. With Lucy, obviously, or anybody, that doesn't know, and figure that might, I'll only deal with a couple of there. Uh, maybe protecting. But there are assets, and considering the losing value, we need to go to, at least have some, you know, control of them. Still, we think, one of them in the land next door, and the car parks especially, and, uh, the public toilets. Um, and the argument is for short money, and you've got to help to pass past the county's debt. Probably something approaching a big impact, I believe. Then, um, in, in fact, we'd have, oh, let's ramp up car park charges. And we might not say so, but let's get your car park charges down. But they can very easily go up. And, you know, any public lose, let somebody sitting in the arse, do, do you need two toilets in the town? It's the one on the bus station. So, you know, there, there is a risk that we could lose assets within the next five, six years, under, under the year destruction. So we need, we need to look at what we ought to be controlling, start negotiating, keep up any action plans.
This will be proactive, um, for the city.
Absolutely.
Just mentioning that, is it, do we have a strategic register for the town council, that we, we prioritise our risks and some of the things that exist which are on the horizon, so part of the committee's responsibilities, the town council is to look at those foreseeable risks that we could potentially see, if this could happen, I've looked up before, what bits are falling around that place there. What is going to be the direct impact to locals of, uh, town councils, what we can start looking at strategic plans and say, actually, these are our key areas. This is what we need to look at holding on to, areas you say where we, if we consider investment, we can place those areas at risk. So they're actually a great risk to us financially, and the cost of pritied to those, so when we get to that point, we look at all the nice to haves, and then we've got all the things we can actually pick up, potentially, and you can budget against that, but look here, over five years, we can forecast against that, so actually, where's that going to be in that period of time? We're going to review these, so we know exactly where we are, any point we could risk all that, allocate a person to manage monitoring all, taking effect on that, actually gets that, side of it that we don't want, and you know, so we can sort those, like, so again, first, cherry pick, but also we want to take some of bad as well, you don't want to get away with that, but at least there's a plan developed around that, that says, this is what we intend to do in the next five years.
Yeah, I agree, it's kind of an extension of what Paul was saying, so I don't, I don't think we're on side lines, so.
Yeah.
Things that the town needs and what, what we can do to make sure they stay in town, that's a really good point.
Can I ask if any public consultation in the town's actually taken place to know how these assets are actually appreciated, wanted, or thought to be a waste of money in the university contract, because that's clearly got to be there to support, um, what we're trying to look forward as a future.
Well, I think that probably will be an app, sort of, coming up with what we think, and then doing some, uh, consultations, seeing what the public think, but also maintaining toilets in town, for example, obviously, the university is popular, um, and if we acquired the car parks, which I think is probably a bigger ask, but it would, um, if we did, we can, go down and try to keep the charges at a low level, which again, would be popular, so. I think mostly we're pushing open doors, but you're right, we need to check that.
We've got to show, 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 that is what we, we, we think should happen. We do, when, when we are pushing it, and we've started to charge it, yeah.
Is there a section available on things like what the car parks generates?
Oh, yeah.
And what they constance, and it's right, so that, that will fix that means of work, otherwise we'll take things on and something get out of it.
Oh, there are a lot of it in public gardens, uh, districts.
Last I went in a year or two, the profit on car parks was sort of very good to do in the town.
We don't make any, there isn't much, it's merely in crow, so. That's the one that really.
It would be possible, because quite a lot of it is new to the town council.
Yes.
And some of it is relatively new to the town, but we have a list of what assets, I think we need to draw a list of what assets we need to look at, who, who belongs to, um, I, I know this building belongs to the district, isn't it? Um, but some are county, some are, a breakdown of who, who owns what and what, because we can't go to a consultation until we decide who owns what, what we want to take over as a town, and get a list together, so we can have a list before we have a discussion about it. Have the council's news on it.
We can put something together on that before we discuss it at the next meeting.
Yeah, we have something before the next meeting on that.
Yes.
Sure. Very good with that, thanks, Justin.
Yes. That's a very big topic to discuss, but, uh, um, so if there's nothing else, I think that's the end of the meeting. Um, the next meeting is, one of those two is now the seventeenth of June, and the next four councillors, twenty four. So, thank you for coming, especially the new councillors, we've been able to have a chat to, um, try and catch the training and so on, so, you know, after speaking with other people as well.
Yes, new councillors, please get in contact with us next week when we'll be back, and she's got extra things to be done.
Okay, so thank you very much. We're leaving.